So if I can get a motion to accept tonight's agenda.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, turn over to you Chris for some updates.
Yeah, great. Well, good evening everyone. It's nice to see an audience tonight. To begin, I'd just like to acknowledge that Mr. Hannah is not here this evening as he is traveling and Ms. Stein is tending to some important family business. Both of them extend their regrets and regards. To begin, I'd like to comment on what has been a really fantastic start to the school year. It's always really exciting to first welcome staff, our new staff members, then followed by all of our other staff and then importantly, our students. The first few days from my perspective and that, that I've heard from our administrative team and our faculty and staff, has really been exceptional. Transportation started really without much of a hitch at all. On the first day of school, buses were essentially running on time. So I extend my kudos to the transportation department and the staff at Royal Coach. Our enrollment to start the school year is relatively consistent to where we were when we started last September, seventeen hundred seventy-one students in contrast to seventeen sixty-four. We recognize that number fluctuates once folks settle in with students withdrawing that had relocated and new families moving in. But a special thanks to everyone who played such an important role in the first day's success, really ranging from teachers to students and support staff and administration and parents. It was a perfect start to the school year. As you can imagine, we start off the school year also with some staff in service. We had a two-day administrative retreat that was then followed by a couple of days of a new teacher institute and then all of the staff returned for two days for, really focused on learning and preparation for the school year. This year, we were excited to welcome a keynote speaker, Rebbe Kern, who talked to all district staff on the topic of intersectionality, which is the intersection of all that makes the Irvington community what it is. By telling her own story of being an adopted, gender non-binary person with a disability and a Jewish person of color, we were able to highlight all the different things that we need to consider to really acknowledge and celebrate all of the students and staff members in our school and doing so in a welcoming school community that's free of any sort of barriers and certainly free of implicit bias. This was a great first conversation for us as a school community and we look forward to building upon this work with more learning throughout the school year. Also, I want to highlight some great things that have, exciting things that have been happening at the middle school. So we look at Mr. Sotile and Ms. Daly in the audience. We began to roll out yesterday our middle school one-to-one Chromebook initiative. So yesterday, our eighth graders actually came through this room and received their own Chromebooks. And not only did the kids receive their Chromebooks, they received these really cool cases to protect them that are personalized with our Irvington logo right on the front. And I was here for one of the classes when they were receiving their Chromebooks and to see their excitement and knowing it was matched by the enthusiasm of the faculty members was really, really rewarding. I want to extend my thanks and congratulations to our Director of Technology, Jay Stromwasser, the administrative team at the middle school, Dr. Core, and our Egitech team for all the hard work and planning that really went into what was a wonderful rollout. Additionally, I want to extend my gratitude to the board and the community for your support of this important initiative. As always, there's a ton of exciting events happening at the beginning of the school year, ranging from barbecues and other socials to open houses, a lot of sporting events. So please stay dialed in to all the school and district level communications, check out the Facebook page and the website. Too much for me to list, but there is a lot of great things happening in our schools. For athletic events, you can always, where at elementary school or another school, you may not be thinking about it, but you can hit a link from the district homepage, from the district newsletter each Saturday morning that will take you right to the schedules. Our next board meeting, we're going to have an important discussion related to our annual goals and tonight, we're going to look forward to a conversation on the topic of discussion. There'll be many other great topics throughout the year that'll be interesting and engaging. The board will be publishing a list of those topics in the coming weeks, so we hope if there's one of interest that you come out and join us certainly. And before we jump into board business, I want to slow down a minute and acknowledge a valued member of our school community. Recently, our community lost a longtime resident, Mr. Philip Mailey. Mr. Mailey was deeply involved in the Irvington community and also served on the Board of Education from nineteen seventy-nine to nineteen eighty-five and was president of the board for two terms, once in nineteen eighty and once in nineteen eighty-four. I didn't have the pleasure of working with Mailey, but I know he was passionate about our schools, our students, our community. And notably, he was really passionate, engaged in making sure our students had opportunities to learn more world languages, to be able to speak a variety of languages. He certainly will be missed by many in our community and I would ask that you all just join me in giving a moment of silence to honor the contributions in memory of Mr. Mailey. Thank you.
If you'd like, you want to give committee reports to the end and move into the discussions since you've got a lot of people here?
Yeah, just remember to come back to.
Yeah. I think at this point, we'll skip ahead to item seven, which is a discussion with the board and Dr. Harrison about the philosophy around discipline. You know, we intend to broadly discuss the various approaches and philosophies to ensure that all viewpoints on this important topic are heard, but due to the board's obligations under state and federal law to maintain confidentiality as it relates to student records and information, I remind everyone that we should not discuss specific events, whether actual or hypothetical, and remind my fellow board members and others to keep that in mind when making comments or asking questions.
Great. So thank you, Mr. Friedman.
May I ask, is there going to be an opportunity for community questions after this presentation?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving six.
Yes.
Six point one after.
Just wanted to make sure everybody knows that.
So thank you. While today's date sits prominently before us on the screen, I want to kind of roll back the hands of time a little bit. And when we started this, this particular school year and when I look at many of our students out in the audience, I know the school year is only a matter of days old for you. But at the same time, when we step back as staff, administrators, the Board of Education, this school year actually started for us back on July 2nd, which was the reorganization meeting. At that point in time, I did make some comments related to discipline and those comments were considerations of my, my thinking and my commitment to the direction that we were heading as a school community as your superintendent. And in doing so, I really explained that I wanted to rethink the nature of consequences, wanting consequences to be able to be supportive of students, consequences of significant violations of our code of conduct, wanting to really focus on the learning and that opportunity to intervention, to intervene, to be able to support our students and their families. And in doing so, there would be consideration in and around the length of consequences and considering, reconsidering the approach that we would be taking to address those situations while looking to balance code of conduct, laws, safety of individuals, the health of individuals and maintaining a school environment that's truly conducive to student learning. Then again, on the twenty-seventh of August, we had a similar conversation that was initiated by trustee Hannah and he expressed some impassioned thoughts related to the subject as well, which I'd say were not different or in contrast to those that I conveyed on the second of July and I again expressed and reconfirmed my commitment. So tonight, we kind of step back and I want to just provide a general overview of discipline, some of the thinking in and around discipline as it pertains to, to students, some of the responsibilities that we have as a school community, some prospective thinking, meaning what we're thinking about and looking at for the future, knowing that we can't implement everything today, but it's setting some objectives for us to look at where we may be able to head in the future. So it's going to keep it informal, but it's easier for me to function this way at the moment. So when we think about a code of conduct, there's obviously rationale behind it. It's grounded in district policy. It's also, many of the foundations of it sit within state law and commissioners' regulations. But that said, when we speak very generically about a code of conduct, we think about certain objectives. We want one that's going to foster responsibility in our students. We want to promote social and emotional and physical wellness for individuals and within our school community. And we also want to make sure that we're supporting a learning culture that is a productive environment in each of our schools. We want to make sure that it's respecting all members of our school community, that we're setting standards and expectations for students and our faculty and staff and that we want to step back and I think this is where some of our communication and dialogue lies today, in and around the idea of thinking of what our values are here in Irvington. So when we think of situations that may arise in any of our schools, there's always considerations and situations are always looked at on an individual basis. That said, we know it's unique. Each child is unique and each instance is going to have some different details. So when we step back and evaluate each occurrence, we recognize that there's a code of conduct that is policy, that is administrators, that is our job to employ. So we look at the standards that are described and set forth therein. We look at the nature of the incident and here comes the specific details as it pertains to the actual occurrence that we are investigating and evaluating. It's important that we consider the developmental stages of the students involved. Certainly, a student that acts in a certain way or has a particular infraction of a standard within our code of conduct that is fifteen years old versus a child that is six, seven, eight years old, you're going to assess where they are in that developmental continuum and consider what the appropriate response is. And it's going to vary based upon where that child sits in that continuum. So there's going to be a different level of understanding and expectation for what appropriate response or the expectations for conduct would be for a child of different ages. We also have to consider the health and safety of the individual students that are involved in a scenario, whether it is a situation that we could say it only involves one particular child, if there are students that have an interaction, that may bring rise the potential consequence or consideration of consequence or the overall impact on the broader school community. We take into account the special needs that may be present for individual students, those that are known to us at the time and of course, in some of these instances, we learn others that we may look to address and support. We consider discipline to also be progressive in the, in the sense that it is our hope that when something occurs, that there isn't a second occurrence, that there aren't multiple layers of discipline that can occur, whether it's similar type behaviors or other types of infractions that really build upon each other. So we consider the scope of that child's experience in identifying appropriate responses from an administrative perspective. We also want to consider learning components. We just certainly don't want discipline to be punitive. We want to be able to identify opportunities by which an individual is going to learn from their experience and in some cases, opportunities that can benefit the school community. And then finally, and very, very importantly, is thinking about the interventions that we can provide as a school community. Sometimes it's direct, the services that we have as a school district that can support a child and, and their family or where we can certainly partner with the family and other outside agencies to provide supports to be able to help what a child's particular needs are in a given situation. So it worked, thank you Paulie. So that said, we think about a variety of different approaches that are present when we approach student behavior. And you can see it's a real tiered approach and beginning with proactive learning experiences, strictly all the way down to of course, the least desirable scenario where we have children that can be suspended out of school. So to begin, in considering proactive learning experiences, we consider where our focus is in and around social, emotional learning in school, character education, our teaching that occurs in each and every school, some in different ways and of course, through that developmental lens related to habits of mind and teaching of the dispositions that we talk about that are named in the district's theories of action. There's opportunities for learning in the health curriculum. We have a student assistance counselor and other community-based programs that are brought in as resources within our school community. We look at providing and maintaining a positive school culture. As I said in my remarks before, that idea of a welcoming school community, one that is there to be able to support the needs of all children. And then when we think about where challenges begin to surface and there may be difficulties that are present, we start with conversations and lower-level interventions that occur with conferences among students, parents and staff to be able to troubleshoot, to be able to come up with strategies to support what the needs may be at that point in time. We employ peer mediation and I want to say peer mediation when appropriate. Not every situation lends itself to peer mediation. When we have a situation when there's a straightforward conflict, it may be appropriate to sit children down and work through the challenges that may be before them. But then there's times, such as an instance of bullying, where it may not be appropriate to facilitate a mediation session where there's power struggles that may be in place and we don't want to further victimize a child that hasn't been treated well by a peer. So we have to carefully evaluate when there's good opportunities to utilize that strategy. Of course, we have counseling services that we employ now proudly in all of our schools. In doing so, we have school counselors, one school counselor K through five, when we have counselors in the, excuse me, middle school as well as the high school. We have one school social worker district-wide, one student assistance counselor split among our secondary schools and then our school psychologists who certainly lend a hand in supporting all of our students, but most specifically, their responsibilities support students with special needs. But again, they're here to support everyone. I do want to acknowledge that our student assistance counselor, or the acronym that you see above, SAC, is an individual that has a specialty in training in supporting students, their families and staff on topics in and around drug and substance abuse issues. So it could be a matter where they work with a particular child about their own experiences, their own use of substances. And that can range from, when we think of illicit drugs, we think of alcohol use, tobacco use. It can touch on a number of different topics. It also crosses over into looking at related supports for difficult situations and may support a student who has family members that are struggling with substance abuse issues and other challenges that they may have in their house. And I can think of many occurrences where that level of support happens on both sides, right? That idea of supporting the child who has struggles in their home or family life and working with the child and the family or working with a student that's experiencing some difficulties. We can consider prescribed learning experiences, so in certain instances, based upon what the situation may be and remember before, in the prior slide, I talked about each scenario being unique. So when we look at those unique situations, there may be opportunities for learning, research on a project, opportunities to be able to give back to your school community and develop some kind of learning product that could be helpful and a resource to others down the road. That is something that fits into that developmental consideration as well, to think about the best way to make an impact and to be able to support a student's behavior and their, their learning needs at that given time. We have opportunities for detention, which is used whether it's considered before school, after school, in recess. I would say that when we look at those opportunities, again, you're looking at how it can be employed to support those individual children's needs. There are times when a recess suspension may not be, or detention may not be the appropriate approach for, for a given child based upon their needs, but in other instances, it may be appropriate. And you'll note an asterisk there as well as one next to in-school suspension, which is another strategy that is employed. And when we consider in-school suspension, we are thinking of a more serious infraction, something that would go beyond the bullets that you see that fall above it, including a detention. But when we think of detention and in-school suspension, there's limitations to how we can implement that. And when I say limitations, it's not limitations in and around our thinking, it's limitations in our infrastructure and ability to implement at this point in time. And then finally, the least desirable outcome or consequence would be that of out-of-school suspension, whether you're looking at that as a short-term suspension or a longer-term suspension and we'll get into more detail related to that. So when we think of school-centered supports and intervention, we step in and we think of opportunities where we can support students and their families. And we avail a number of services, whether they are through, directly through the school district or outside, as I said before, with some independent services that we can connect a family with or they identify on their own per conversations and discussion with school staff. First, some of the general examples that we think of on a school level, school-based interventions, there's, we think of different structures that exist and RTI response to intervention or MTSS, which is multi-tier suspension support systems. That was Freudian. And, and there we look at different tiers of support, things that happen in the classroom, other supports in the building that come in to be able to support the students in a very organized way where we were able to provide supports, collect data to monitor students' growth and progress. Again, referencing the different counseling services that I referenced before. And then coordination with external services and resources. Some of that may come through recommendation and collaboration with our, our student assistance counselor and other partnerships that we make with families. It is quite often an occurrence where we see the school and family partnering together and making connections with services such as a counselor that a family may already be working with, where our own school staff engages with the independent counselor and they share thinking and coordinate strategies that are being employed to support a particular child's needs. Then during suspension periods, there's other interventions that we employ. When we look at students that are out of school for any extended duration of time, we have a responsibility to provide home instruction, which I'll touch on again later. At times when appropriate, we align services to provide supports for our student assistance counselor to work with a child and his or her family. Times when we work with a family to integrate drug screening or drug testing, if there are kids that have been involved in utilizing substances. Instances where we collaborate with a family and we encourage a substance abuse evaluation and treatment as appropriate or education as found to be necessary. The identification of independent counseling and then again, targeted learning experiences that would be associated with the, the needs or the situation in which the child was involved. So that said, a little bit more about suspension. So this is really only utilized, as I said, for a significant violation of our code of conduct. There's different tiers of suspension, the first being a principal-based suspension is what it's referred, so it's a school-level suspension, which can be for up to five days. For those most serious consequences or infractions, something that would exceed five days, it would be referred to a superintendent's suspension, which would be over five days and would result in a disciplinary hearing. In all these instances, students are afforded appropriate due process as prescribed by law and defined in our policies. The Board of Education policies really detail what the due process does look like, including an appeal process that is available to everybody in each of those instances. When we step back.
Harrison, can you just go into maybe a little more detail about the due process and the appeal process, just so the community can have an understanding of what that looks like?
Yeah. So at any time of a suspension, a family is afforded the opportunity for an informal hearing with the school-level administration where they can certainly ask questions and engage in dialogue about the details of the situation, the findings from the, the administration had within their respective, I'd say, investigation. And at that point in time, if a family is not satisfied with the results, they have the ability to appeal the local principal's determination to the superintendent. At such time, I look at the, the facts and only the facts that were reviewed by the school administration and I make an independent assessment to either support, modify or overrule the consequence that was administered by a school-level administrator. At such time, if a parent was unsatisfied, they have the opportunity then to further appeal to the Board of Education and of course, the Commissioner of Education. Similar suit would follow in a scenario of a superintendent's suspension, that if there was a suspension that was implemented, that there, at my level, the same levels of appeal would exist where they, a family could appeal to the Board of Education and then if still unsatisfied, subsequently have the opportunity to appeal to the Commissioner of Education. So when we step back and we think about the cost of suspension and, and I say so very, very frankly and very literally, when we think about the effects on student and family, you know, as educators, the last thing we want to see is our students out of school. And so we know there is lost instructional time and there are experiences that happen in school that are critical, that go beyond what happens just with the learning of the classroom and that's the social and emotional components of school. The experiences, when we think of that holistic experiences, students are removed from that dynamic. And then I would be naive to say that it doesn't at times pose hardship for family. Family where there are situations where we have working parents that aren't there to be able to support child and they could have impacts on, on their own professional or family responsibilities. On the district, there are fiscal impacts, so when we think of the cost of providing that home instruction and students are due up to ten hours a week, two hours for five core subject areas, that averages approximately six hundred seventy-five dollars for a week of that instruction. When we go through a disciplinary hearing, we do have legal guidance and I could not put an exact dollar amount because some cases are more straightforward than, than others, but there's legal costs that the district incurs at an hourly rate of two hundred forty-five dollars an hour. The district employs a hearing officer that the board appoints each and every year at the reorganization meeting and that service is something that is contracted through a BOSI's COSER, a cooperative agreement. So the district does receive aid back on that, but that is on its face initially a two hundred dollar an hour outlay and that could be an hour, two hours for a given hearing. So when we look at the costs, you can consider the, the instruction at the six hundred seventy-five dollars a week and that would apply uniquely to each and every case for the home instruction. And then you can consider a few hours of legal service and a couple hours associated with the hearing officer. So you can see how quickly the cost that up. I don't want to necessarily say you compare one to the other. There are two different lenses and two different ways of looking at it and I would tell you as an educator, as a parent. as an educator, as a parent, I would step back and I think about those personal impacts first. And as your superintendent and one who has responsibility for the district budget, I do consider the latter part, which are the fiscal impacts. So this is where I think we circle back to my opening comments, where there's opportunities before us, and as I've said, that each situation is unique. And I sincerely hope we face very few situations this year where we're considering suspension or we're faced with situations where that would be a discussion that the administration would be having with a student and his or her family. But when we do, again, we're looking for shifts in that practice when it comes to some of those long-term suspenses that aren't having significant impacts on the overwhelming safety and operations of the broader school community. So when we think about this, we know that there's opportunities. So it's not only reevaluating what we see the duration of consequences to be, but it's starting to consider how we can look at different approaches. The word restorative is often used when you have these conversations. So when we say restorative, there's different tiers to that, right? So that idea of being able to give back to one's community, to make right with a community, for me to feel good about who I am and understanding that, you know what, I learned from this, and I'm not going to be ostracized by my community. So in doing that, there's a variety of different opportunities that exist that are real simplistic on their face. And in doing so, we look at community service as one consideration for a school district and a program. But when we do so, we recognize there's some limitations there. As a school district, as a superintendent, or as a principal, we don't have the ability just to necessarily assign that unless it's in agreement with the particular family. We have limitations in the types of consequences that we can administer. So we would need to develop structures and have partnerships with family to be able to implement such a program, and obviously have the venue and opportunity to allow it to happen. We could think of opportunities that are more public-facing for our students in developing public service-type activities, and the real simplistic ways to think about a public service announcement, the idea of doing research in an article, or some kind of findings that could be published either under the script of a student or anonymously as a learning tool or resource for our school community. We think of someone that could potentially help organize a learning experience on a given topic, that not only would benefit that particular student in working through that challenging situation, but could be helpful to others in the school community. We're looking at comprehensive counseling services that could be offered in supporting a student. And then we start to think about that in-school suspension, and to go back to what I referenced earlier, potentially a more creative look at our detention programs. Theoretically, we could look at the opportunity for in-school suspension, where you would have a program where a child wouldn't be out of school, child would be in school, receiving instruction in school, but doing so outside of the routines of a normal school schedule. And you could think about looking at that not only from an instructional standpoint, but we could wrap other supports around it, or integrate other supports into it, where counselors could push in, we could work with students in setting goals in and around their needs and the situation in which they're involved that brought them to the in-school suspension, or other related services that could benefit kids in that unique situation. But the challenges that we have here go beyond what I referenced with community service earlier, and needing to have the partnership beyond the structure, but needing to have consent from a family for their child to be able to participate in such an arrangement. We need staffing to be able to support these programs. Every one of our staff members in our schools, whether it's an administrator, a teacher, an instructional aide, a teaching assistant, one of our related service providers, have a full-time job already, and they are supporting the needs, instructing kids every period of the day as is prescribed within their respective employment contracts. So if we were to look at a situation where we would want to be able to implement one of these creative approaches, where there's some detention structure and school suspension, one, we'd need to be able to have the human resources to be able to support it, and to have an appropriate environment for that space. I could say that in essentially every case, every one of the classrooms in our schools is used on a consistent basis. We don't have rooms that sit empty for any large portion of the day, so there would have to be consideration in and around that, and then of course, looking at the staffing. One of the challenges that you find in a suburban school district, a smaller district such as Irvington, is that you don't have the frequency of suspendable offenses that you would be able to say, you know what, this is something we believe in, this is something that we want to staff, and you know, the administration goes to the Board of Education and says, "Board, you know, give us the funding and the support to be able to implement a program like this." Because realistically, the program wouldn't be utilized on a daily basis, because our volume of suspensions aren't that consistent and isn't that great. But there could be opportunities for us to explore, whether that's in partnerships with other organizations. There are some programs that exist in some BOSIs in different parts of the state, to be able to help create some opportunities here, to be able to shift our practices to be more beneficial to kids, and to reduce some of those costs that I referenced before, both on the personal side and potentially some of the fiscal impacts. But realistically, when I say the fiscal here, some of those new models, while may be more beneficial to kids, it would need to be a make investment we're making in children, because it likely would far exceed the costs that we incur associated with fiscal impacts of a suspension. So finally, you know, where we are today, you know, I have, much of the administrative team is here in the room today, because this is work that we share, commitment that we've, that we're making together in supporting our students' needs and rethinking some of our approaches associated with discipline. We recognize that we're not going to be able to make adjustments wholesale, that we're going to make modifications throughout the year. Each situation is unique, as I said, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but they need to be evaluated on those individual instances and the facts and the needs that are present at those given times. But when we consider those next steps, one consideration maybe for us is to take a step back and to rethink, you know, some of the philosophical approaches to what the code of conduct really defines, and to reflect the community's values, as I referenced at the beginning of the discussion.
Dave, Dr. Harrison, I'm sure that board members probably have comments or questions, so I'll, at this point, open it up to people who would like to have, to make a comment. Erin, I don't know if you...
I have no questions.
Okay. Beth, it's a...
Yeah, I'd like to find out a little bit more about the limitations on in-school suspensions. I was wondering if when we were talking about the capital plan and we talk about the limitation of space, if any thought was ever taken into the need for that from a social and emotional learning component? I don't know, I mean, I hadn't even thought about it until I saw your presentation, but we're talking about limitations of space as one of the obstacles, and I didn't know if that had ever been discussed.
We did not have conversation as it particularly pertains to an in-school suspension program. However, when I think of here at the campus, one of the things that we're going to be doing is essentially remodeling our library and media center, and there's going to be the development of some flexible spaces there. So theoretically, I don't want to assign spaces before they're designed, and I look out to my colleagues in the audience, and they're probably, they probably had lots of grand ideas for how they're going to utilize that space for regular instruction. But there's opportunities that could be present within some of those spaces. I don't want to say that in-school suspension has never been provided. There certainly are instances where students have received in-school suspension for any number of reasons. But realistically, it often falls upon our administrators to provide oversight or other staff members, which takes them away from other responsibilities. So there, we would need to be able to create a mechanism, as well as a space, to support these opportunities for our students.
And so in terms of like the fiscal costs of in-house instruction at, you know, coming out at $675 per week for two hours a day for five days, is there any mechanism where you would actually, and just forgive me, this is just out of the box based on this presentation, contemplating using substitute teachers for that role, or is that just not appropriate for what we're talking about?
You would have wanted to have the right person for that role, a person that would not just be qualified to provide support and leadership in a classroom when a teacher's out on a given day. You would want to have the right person that's going to be able to make connections with kids, that's going to be able to support some broader objectives that we'd be looking to integrate into a program, and have someone that would be consistently available, because I think if we were to structure a program, we would want to have continuity in how it's administered, and not have different expectations from, you know, one instance to another when it was offered. So it, you know, as we look for opportunities on this front, it would be something that, as administrative team, we need to collaborate and develop some thinking in and around.
And for BOSIs, basically, our local, well, the BOSIs that we're a member of doesn't provide any program?
Southern Westchester BOSIs doesn't provide a program. I believe Putnam Northern BOSIs does provide a half-day program, but at a greater distance. And of course, there's a cost associated with it. I believe Orange County or Sullivan has a full-day program for students that are suspended, where they receive academics, as well as some counseling supports in a program.
I just had curiosity, because we could cross-contract with them, but I know that that's done, but do you, do we, can we find out at a future date perhaps what the costs are?
We certainly, we could certainly investigate it, and so there would be a couple layers of consideration with something like that, not only what the tuition, so to speak, cost would be, but we'd have to provide transportation for a child, which would be pretty costly, so we could certainly look at that. The transportation would be challenging, based on the location, number of kids, and the like, if the bus is going that route, so on and so forth. But we could, we could look at some estimates for opportunities such as that.
Thank you. I may come back to other questions later, Dave. Do you have anything now?
I do.
Actually, Beth, I could just piggyback on the in-school piece. So I guess one of the things that I'd like to, you know, see around our thinking is, assuming we can identify suitable space, understanding what other costs would be involved in trying to utilize in-school suspension beyond the instruction piece. Because I guess the way I see it is, if we're paying for the tutor to go to someone's house, we could just as easily pay for the tutor to come to school and provide the instruction there, assuming we have the space. But if we're going to have a lot of additional costs on top of that, I think we'd want to understand that, so...
Yeah, I would say it's not as simplistic as it may seem. I got to be honest, where this is a really important topic to us. The number of students suspended is not consistent from year to year, week to week, day to day. We go through large periods of time where we don't have students that are suspended from school. So to build a structure, to be able to staff and support it, becomes really challenging. Let's say we do find that hypothetical appropriate person to come in, and we create the structure, and we actually have a social worker that has freedom in his or her day to be able to come in and provide some support for our students, you really run the risk of looking at a scenario where that person moves on for another job, because you're only employing him or her on random days and times. So it would have to be a look at a broader structure, where an individual could provide other layers of support and services in a school community. It makes me reflect back on one of the conversations that we had at our Administrative Board Round Table, I think it was last year, and I looked at Mr. Samuelson, I think there was reference from a high school, that idea and thinking around broader goals around student wellness, and there was reference to like the model of a campus advisor or a campus dean, and that came up in some of our other conversations, that it could be an individual that serves in multiple capacities, and one, implementing some of these broader scale, whether it's character ed programs, thinking of restorative practices and creating opportunities for engagement for our students that go outside of the bounds of student discipline, but could be one that could potentially be able to support and supervise such a program. And looking at a model that it would bring great relief and support to our administrative team to manage some of the day-to-day, lower-level student needs, discipline that may come up, thinking about attendance issues, parking issues, all those little things that consume a tremendous amount of time, and then would free up our administrators to do more important work, working individually with students and families in supporting instruction.
Mr. Gabriel, do you have...
I do.
Go ahead.
I have to remember to do this. So I'm going to stay away from suspension talk, if I might, sort of shift the conversation. And I very much appreciate this conversation, and I also very much appreciate all the kids here, so, because that's why we're here, so, for you. So for you to be here means there's a serious investment, and so we take this very seriously, and I'm thrilled. So I'm going to play off some of the things that you said, you know, that we don't have a volume of suspension in the district to support certain things. So what that leads me to believe as a, you know, 20-plus-year veteran educator, that a lot of the stuff that we're dealing with is, I'm not going, I use the word stoppable, but interventionable at the classroom level. And you talked about social-emotional learning, you talked about RTI, and you talked about character education, and I know, you know, just firsthand how that works at Main Street School, and all those things. And I wonder, you know, we've been talking since the last year's budget ask about the social worker, and talking about putting into play a social-emotional framework where classroom teachers would ultimately be trained over time to create those interventions that don't necessarily need to then scale kids up to, you know, suspendable offenses, you know, using a culturally responsive curriculum that creates a humanization, you know, maybe exposing middle school kids who, in my experience thus far, don't really read many novels, and sort of start reading novels together about situations, so it's not about one kid but about society and how they're placed in society, is, and the sort of thinking about those things and utilizing the structures that we have in place now, the professional learning days, you know, the time that teachers have during the day to meet with each other to talk about, you know, using these restorative practices that we're talking about, and then seeing that stuff in play, coming back into the budget, and putting in back, you know, maybe not just for one social worker, but for two social workers, right, and seeing how that work might be supported. And I certainly think, you know, and there's a curricular approach to this that can be preventative in nature with, you know, in terms of RTI, in terms of character ed. And so I wonder if we could do some exploration of that, so that our kids, you know, in advisory programs, things to that effect, you know, how do we approach programming to help solve some of the issues from escalating? You know, and thinking about, if we, we don't have the capacity outside of the classroom, we need to create the capacity in the classroom, right? You know, I, again, taught for a long time, so this is not foreign to me.
If I may interject, Dave, I would say that what you're saying certainly is not foreign to us, and I flip back to the slide, because there's lots of things that happen in, on the school level and in the classroom. Recently, I shared a draft document with the Board of Education, our school district counseling plan, and in that, we reference the social-emotional, New York State social-emotional framework. And as we'll see in the presentation of district goals next week, that, or in two weeks, that that work is being implemented district-wide in different levels. The counseling plan talks specifically to the framework of the S- New York State SEL framework, and those objectives are not just going to be associated with the work of our counselors, but it's something that's going to be embraced and embodied in the curriculum in our schools. So you're going to see that step forward, so, and we look forward to finalizing that plan and posting it, communicating it with the public, because I think it embodies a lot of what you referenced, and what some members of the Board have been asking for over recent months. So I'd encourage you to take a look at that draft, and for community, once it's finalized, we'll be able to share that in the near future.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to, I'd like to build somewhat on what Dave has brought up, in that I feel like the youngest kids, and I, while I, I'm sorry that the, I guess the open house made it impossible for some of the elementary administrators to be here, that I would like to understand more about prevent, preventing the sorts of interventions that are most counterproductive in... the sorts of interventions that are most counterproductive in the elementary years. As a, as a parent of elementary school kids, it's very difficult when you are reading in the, in the media. I think any, anyone with, with small children will tell you not to see, not to see articles about how children need to move more than they do, just as an example. Children need to move in their school day and that we have taken away that, many of those opportunities for them and we limit those opportunities for them. And so for me, I would, I would really like to understand how looking at both curriculum and, and looking more directly at avoiding situations in which kids are out of bounds in the classroom means fewer disciplinary actions at the elementary level. So it's, I mean, none of those folks are going to be here now because they were all at open house, but this evening or are not seeing this discussion also being about the elementary level. But I would, I would like to just be a voice for the elementary, for the elementary kids who perhaps are, whose parents may not even, I think at some level, understand why their kids need to be disciplined and fully what the expectations are and why the expectations are the way they are. All they see is you've taken the recess time away from us. And that's, and I know that's not an Irvington-specific thing. That is a much broader thing. And I'm not trying to bring that to Irvington, but let's, let's think about it for a moment, I guess.
Yeah, and I would say in response, and I certainly don't want to speak for my elementary colleagues and certainly invite Dr. Core to chime in where appropriate. When we think about the scope of where we are, we're talking about something philosophically that does flow through our schools K through 12. But when we're thinking of a lot of the challenges that we face, many of them are admittedly at the secondary level. The vast majority of our significant consequences do occur at the secondary level. But when we look at things that happen at the elementary school, the idea of interventions is that the foundation of what we do, the tier-one interventions that are being pushed into the classroom, teacher working with child, working with family, and pushing supports into the classroom with a tier-two intervention, there's layers of support that happen there. I certainly don't want to create a perception that there aren't consequences that occur at the middle school or challenges behaviorally. They do happen. Kids are kids, right? We learn, we make mistakes. We don't have large, I'm sorry, elementary school, thank you. But we, there are times when it's determined to be appropriate that recess may be an appropriate consequence, but that's given the unique situation and that child's needs. And a parent isn't someone that's necessarily sitting outside of the process. The administrative team engages in dialogue with the parents. And many times at the elementary level, when it comes to the need for a consequence, it is not the first conversation that has been had. So there is dialogue, there is learning and engagement that does happen. So it should be rare to a parent that it comes across as a surprise. And if it is, that's an appropriate conversation for a parent and administrator to share. Certainly support the thoughts related to the need to move. I think all of us need to move. Frankly, when we had a fire drill at Dow's Lane today and the district office staff evacuated with everybody else, we all kind of joked around how it was refreshing just to get up and walk around a little bit. So as adults, you can only imagine what it feels like to be inside a six, seven-year-old body, sitting in a classroom all day. So, but certainly not to take those experiences away from our children. But each situation is certainly considered uniquely and, and trying to consider the needs of that particular child.
And to what extent, when communications break down, how are, how are matters brought to? Is there a process in place so that parents aren't consistently surprised? And is that, how do we, how do we look at teacher training, say, as an element of this? Or, I mean, are those expectations clear on both sides?
I'm not sure what you mean by clear on both sides. I think, you know, we step back at the foundational level. All of our teachers are equipped and supported to be able to manage their classroom environments and the other duties to which they are assigned. We, there's regular assemblies that occur at an elementary level where there's dialogue about school expectations. And our elementary schools bring it down very foundationally to think about the statements that the students recite each and every morning. And you think about the dialogue that happens in our elementary schools and morning meetings and other structures that are all around setting those levels of expectation. There's communications that go home from both of our elementary administrations that reinforce those messages. And then if we want to think more concretely, there is a student-friendly code of conduct that is published on the school district website as a, as a resource to parents. But I think at that very basic level, there's lots of learning that does happen and it's embedded in, in all the teaching in the classroom. And we think of those very simplistic ways about being safe, being prepared, being ready in a classroom. That learning happens on a, on a daily basis. And our teachers really teach into what those examples are and make it real-life experiences for our children so they understand what appropriate behaviors would look like in a school environment and what it means to be as a contributing member of their school community.
Just following up on more of those questions about recess at the elementary school. Having not had any children there in a long time, I guess what I would like to know or assurances from you is, is there a consistent practice that if a student is, his or her consequence is not allowed, you know, that they can attend recess? Is there a consistent threshold in which that is taken away from a student?
I'm not going to speak for the administrat, the administrators at the particular schools, but each situation is reviewed uniquely. If a, if a child is having some difficulties containing him or herself or interacting appropriately at recess, there's ways to rethink what that experience may look like. And some of that's providing supports and modeling experiences, providing appropriate role models and constructed experiences that demonstrate expectations. But at times, the removal from the experience might be necessary for a child to be able to collect him or herself and to unfortunately, you know, have a consequence for a behavior that occurs in that window of time. So I certainly will not paint it with a broad brush because each situation is unique, but is not a wholesale consequence that's utilized to address student misbehaviors at an elementary level.
Can I, can I just, as a follow-up to that? And by no means am I a specialist when it comes to understanding, you know, taking away recess or anything like that. But there was a part of me that felt like it could be sort of counterproductive because kids need to get their wiggles out. So when that is the repercussion, what opportunity do they have then, maybe later in the day, maybe not during their normal recess period, to sort of run around for a few minutes just to get that excess energy out? Because from my perspective, what I've seen is a lot of it is around kids who need to move around for a moment, maybe not in that traditional classroom environment. And I'm sure there's no perfect solution, but having had a child, and still have a child in elementary school, those are just things I've seen. Or maybe where sometimes PE, they're not allowed to participate in PE for a reason and then potentially not recess or things like that. Just something to think about, I'm sure. I know no one's here to answer the question.
Again, I want to caution us. We don't have a wholesale approach to discipline where we've had and, and where the reflection has occurred has been really looking at the secondary level and having different approaches there. When we look at the elementary level, you know, I'm not seeing us at a situation where we're having significant behavioral problems in our schools. They're oftentimes one-off instances. And I can tell you on many occasions, and I look to Dr. Core because we, you know, essentially share office space, students that need to exercise and move are given that opportunity. You walk into Dow's Lane by the district office, the first thing you see are the little bouncy seats, right when you walk in the door, right? So that idea is reflecting students' needs and whether provided through the budget or IEF, PTSA grants, there's implementation of flexible classroom furniture that can be manipulated to support kids' needs. We have standing desks in some places. We have desks that can be moved in different structures that be able to support kids' needs in different types of seating so kids can be active while they're learning. Regularly, you can see, you know, an aide or a teacher taking a child on a walk or running around the gym. So we have excellent teachers and people that are very well-equipped to support our students' needs. We certainly want to make sure that there are learning experiences associated with discipline at all levels. And when we recognize our kids at the formative years in our elementary schools, we are looking at it through that lens of growth. And I tell you, it happens on a daily basis. So you go into a classroom, you sit down on the floor with those children and you listen to the teachers and the conversation among the kids. It's about community, it's about their responsibilities, about their role in the community, how they interact with one another, the appropriate ways of communicating. Our kids take a pledge every day about it. So it's happening, it's alive and well. But unfortunately, there's instances that we have to deal with. And, and we constantly are looking to do best by our kids. We've had many conversations in here and I reflect upon the end-of-year presentations in particular at the elementary level where we talk about the behavioral interventions and the work that's being done through RTI to be able to support children. And that's happening across the board in our elementary schools. And you'll see in goal presentations potentially, you know, the work that's growing through the district on that front. So it's there alive and well. So let's please not think about this being a void. We're constantly looking to grow. We're constantly, whether it's my reference to Mr. Graber's comments before and looking at the rollout of the social-emotional framework. It's named in a district-developed document that we're looking at. It's coming up in, in, in school and district goals this year. And we talked about it extensively last year related to RTI. It's alive and well. Let's please not work from a deficit model and think we're broken. We want to, we, I'm saying, I'm not saying that as a criticism. I'm saying that very holistically, that we're looking to grow and move to be able to support our, our students' needs, make things learning experiences and to have an effective approach to discipline. There's times when, I want to say, and I hate this phrase, that we have to put a foot down when things aren't unacceptable. And as students, I look out, you don't want your classes to be disrupted. You're there to learn, right? There's, things can happen that are funny. Someone makes a smart remark, we laugh, we giggle. But at the end of the day, you're there to learn and you know you have a test coming up, you have an assignment you got to get done, and you don't want the disruptions, right? So there's a time when we have to address those kinds of things. We have a responsibility to maintain a safe and orderly school environment. So we can't have kids putting their hands on each other in inappropriate ways aggressively. We cannot have drugs and alcohol in our schools. We cannot have weapons in our schools. There's things that we have to handle and there's things that we have to address by law and by policy. And I tell you, I have an ethical obligation to address those as your superintendent. But I don't want us to work from a place to think that we're broken. We have a tremendous school district. We have excellent teachers and administrators that are doing good work. We're talking about the evolution of our practice.
I just want to clarify, I mean, the purpose of tonight's conversation is to have a conversation, right? And I think some of these questions are also because we don't know. For example, I am a parent of students in the secondary level. You referenced just now in your remarks about the bouncy seats, for example, like different things that are at different schools. I know those exist because I commonly I have meetings with you at the schools, but some board members who have maybe students at the secondary level don't know that and vice versa, parents of elementary, board members with elementary students might not understand certain things, how it happens in practically a secondary level. So like you started this conversation at the beginning of the night, tonight is a conversation between the board and you being the superintendent and the leader of this district. So I hope you don't take some of these questions as we're coming across from a deficit, as more as we're trying to understand and also get our community to understand where we're heading.
Absolutely. And I, and I say that not in response to specifically what you were saying as individual trustees, but I say that for the, the community member that doesn't have the context that you have, that the parents, the staff members, the students in the audience have, because I just don't want anyone to paint a bad, a broad brush. And we have excellent schools, our, our kids are wonderful students and people. Our teachers do, do a great job, our administrators do a great job. Everybody does the best they can every, every day. So I just don't want there to be a soundbite that someone's going to capture that's going to spin this in a different direction. So I just feel my obligation to represent, to be the leader of the school district, to represent my students, to represent the parents, that we're all working hard and continuous improvement is where we're going. So I just needed to clarify that.
I thank you for, for your response relating to the elementary level discipline and also I thank everyone for their patience in that detour.
This is important.
Yeah.
Some of the things I'd like to go back to, because a lot of them have been, I guess, pretty much the case of, if you want to know how they reach later, you say a lot of them happen to the class?
Want to give them a chance to talk now?
Provide an opportunity now for any child who would like to, like to make a comment, go to the microphone and do so.
Or, or-
Or you can always send an email to the board with-
Well, a couple of things is how, how will you, your students in-
Okay, so here, so here's the thing. So we're not done with our conversation. If we want to give some students the opportunity to ask any questions right now, they can. Or, this video will be put up. If you want to go home now, the video will be available online. You can watch it. And if you still have questions, if you email board@irvingtonschools.org, we all get it and we could follow up. And any of these questions you're saying that they have, they can ask us and we do respond.
What did she say?
I would suggest, I would like to just chime in that I think that just as we did when we were doing the building and ground stuff on the shed and we did need to take a break because some people needed to speak, I would appreciate if we had the opportunity to hear from people in the audience now.
Correct, but what I'm saying, but I just want to add, if certain people feel pressure and they don't want to ask at the mic, that you always have the opportunity to email the board directly as well. That's all I meant by that comment.
Thank you, thank you.
What I was saying was at this point, if there are any students who would like to go to the microphone to say something, we'll take a breakdown of the presentation and allow you to do so so you can then return to your studies.
That's fine, or you can email us, that's fine too.
So what-
I guess I'd-
No, 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 you don't have the floor. You'll, afterwards, parent, you can ask questions afterwards, okay?
No kids?
Nobody? Yeah.
How do you know these questions that I have?
That's fine. I hear you.
Yeah, okay. Do we want to-
Did you have, I didn't know if more was done yet.
I am done.
Okay, you hadn't had a chance to speak yet, so.
Yes, I mean, I really do appreciate having this conversation. And, you know, sometimes I think we sit up here and we use certain words and terms that for the layperson, as I call it, edgy speak, it doesn't make sense to the general public. But, so if there's any questions like that, I mean, feel free to ask or stop to ask clarifying questions.
I guess I want to hear a little bit more about, you know, we're talking in theory, restorative practices, the philosophy is changing and the approach is going to change as we go forward. In-school suspensions, when we talked about budgetary asks and everything, I know you've been having conversations with the secondary leadership. I understand that we are a small school district and in-school suspensions are sporadic, so we're not going to hire someone to be, you know, head of this suspension room. But I would like to, I look forward to hearing more about how we can keep kids in the school rather than out of the school. So I think it's pretty unanimous from the board that when it comes to budget season, we definitely would welcome to hear about that. In terms of out-of-school suspensions and I guess the process. So what I think might have been confusing earlier when Brian asked you to describe, you know, suspensions, I guess five days, five or fewer suspensions is by the building principle. If it's, if it's going to be more than five days, it's referred to superintendent's hearing and there's a whole process.
Correct.
And that process is very clearly spelled out in the code of conduct.
Correct.
And legally, you could only, you only have the right to suspend a student or not suspend a student. So typically, schools use-
I would say, so I can clarify. So when we have a situation and we want to be able to support a child, we give an opportunity to, we work with the family to reduce the suspension. We provide for an early re-entry. And in doing so, we, there's an agreement that the family makes with the district to be able to engage in other types of supports and interventions.
Okay.
That can, that can help a child. And assuming those are satisfied, the child is allowed to return to school. That can help a child and assuming those are satisfied, the child is allowed to return to school.
Okay. And, you know, we are a small school district and, you know, our numbers are not that high in terms of in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension. But even for those in and out-of-school suspensions, has there been ever an analysis done on those interventions? How effective they are, not effective, or is that what currently the administration and you are looking into to?
It's hard to say analysis. We have situations and I'll use one, you know, I am not going to put my nose in the middle of counseling. So when we recommend counseling for a child and we talk with the parents about it, the child sees a counselor until that counselor sees fit, that the needs have been satisfied. And there's cases where it may be a long-term relationship and there may be something where it's short-term. We defer to the counselor to be able to do that. We're not seen to be the experts in that front. When we think of children that are being referred to drug testing, or have drug testing as a part of a term for a child to return to school, in doing so, I can tell you that it's generally widely successful in that we don't have occurrences, reoccurrences in many cases. We can look at what our approach is and to be a little more random in our approach as to the scheduling of what those are to be able to make sure there's no funny business behind the scenes. But kids go to an approved laboratory, to a doctor's office to have it done. It's not a home kid or anything along those lines. So I can say we step back and, you know, I look to, you know, the secondary administrators. We're not having reports coming back, generally speaking, where there's kids that are coming back with positive tests. So when we look at that coupled with counseling, we're seeing it as being effective. When we consider referral to an outside agency for an evaluation for treatment, there are situations where we have had children that have significant needs. And I apologize for keep saying children, students. We have young adults that we're working with as well here. But there are students that have had great needs and that have been enrolled in some longer-term treatment programs based upon their needs. So in those particular cases, I would say it was effective in identifying needs and providing supports that a child may not, or interventions that a child, student, may not have otherwise received. In other instances, a student has gone in and it's had that counseling session, so to speak, and they turn around and said, and written a letter that comes back to the school district, this student is not in need of services. So we can look at it as poor judgment, right? And then other situations where they recommend a student engaging in a series of learning experiences that may be offered through an approved center. So we see it coming from experts there. There's limited instances where we've seen reoccurrences where a student has been under the influence in school and then we've seen them come back after a suspension with these interventions where they've come back and been under the influence in school again, that we've detected. So largely, I would say they've been successful. We, you know, we certainly work with our legal counsel and other districts to talk about interventions that they utilize. And I would say that we offer many more than some other districts do. And I think it serves our kids well. But what's important here is that we want to look at the length and the duration, still couple those supports with the consequences, but get our kids back into school soon.
I appreciate that information and the change of practice going forward.
Any trustees have any further comments or questions?
I did want to ask about the, I just, I'm not sure about the public availability of NICE and accountability reports that we do at the end of the year that looks at suspensions. Is that a publicly available document or is that?
Yeah, it's actually, will be reported, I think, for the first time publicly as a part of the new ESSA requirements, the new state requirements. Suspension rates are gonna be reported. The data is publicly available. So like when we step back, like some of the challenges that we have and in particular being a small district, some of the things, when we think about the work we're doing and I come back in referencing the opening, some of my opening remarks around our keynote speaker and being able to build better relationships and having more culturally responsive and prepared staff members in the district, is that we do have disproportionality that occurs in our school district. So when we look at students that receive special services, for example, we have a disproportionate number of students of color or socioeconomic students that are being brought through our CSE process and receive an IEP. We also see a larger number of students of lower socioeconomic status and students of color that are, have received consequences proportionately when we look at the different subgroups of our students, student population. So when we step back holistically, I think as a school community, that's something that we have to own. I can say, I look out to my colleagues in PPS. One thing that they're working on right now is disproportionality related to special education, knowing that our numbers are out of alignment there. So there's some internal auditing and reporting that they're gonna do throughout the course of this year related to special education services. I think it was noted by a community member, there was some light discussion about a year and a half ago. I'm looking to which trustees would remember, maybe Maria and David, or Brian, if you'd remember, where it certainly did surface when we look at the number of students being suspended. It was disproportionate, right? Overall, when we look at the chance of a student being suspended, it's like 1.8% of our students receive a suspension during a school year. So it's a very low number. But when you dig into that data is where the question lies and we have to look at opportunities to reflect on why that's occurring, to make different types of connections with our students, provide different levels of support to make sure that there's impact. We don't want suspensions, but when they occur, we want it to be more representative of our school community.
And so that circles back to what we were talking about with professional development that you talked about on opening day about dealing with intersectionality. And I believe we've heard that there'll be upcoming PD on implicit bias because that could link to your disproportionate impact that you see in the reports, possibly.
So if we go back to the opening remark, all of us, and you read literature on it, all of us, every single person brings some degree of bias to what you do every single day. And that work, and we're still collaborating, the administrative team, in defining what that work will look like. So I don't want to make any kind of promises, other than we're in process. This is important, new initiative for us. And that, no, that very clearly plays a role into it. But it also talks about how we teach, what we teach, the resources that we utilize, the vocabulary that we use. So there's layers and layers of that. But ultimately, at the end of the day, I think if you do address that, that plays one factor in helping students, and what I said before, be in a more welcoming school environment and a school that's more responsive and respectful of their needs and who they are as individuals.
Thank you for your candor about what the report would show on that, thank you.
It's the real data and it's what it is. And it's part of the reason we have the challenges before us and challenges in work that I welcome because it's good for kids and the right thing by kids.
The one thing I would also ask, we have a policy in turn that specifies home instruction. Whether it's home instruction for health reasons, suspensions, it covers everything. I think if the board agrees, I think the policy committee should look at this. Because currently, it states that secondary level student receive 10 hours of instruction and elementary level student receive five hours of instruction. I think in this day and age, it's too little. Using an example, let's say you have your core subjects. If you have an exam one week, well, then you're not getting any tutoring time for your class. So at the secondary level, you know, if you have a concussion, you know, and you're out for two months, three months at a time, sometimes, you know, students have any health issues, you're out of school for a period of time, it's just not enough and you're gonna fall behind. So, I mean, at least, maybe not put a number on it, but because there is a number in the policy, maybe to reflect and incorporate some language that gives building principles the latitude to, you know, supplement if needed, anything like that.
I think.
Also, I think the policy does say that home bound instruction is supposed to be monitored to make sure that the student is still progressing and if not, that steps are taken to look at the quality of that home bound instruction to see if adjustments need to be made. So I think the policy does take that into account, but I think the policy committee certainly look at it. But I think there has to be a starting point for the plan, Sam, is that there's supposed to be an evaluation of the instruction that the child is receiving to make sure they're progressing, but, and you know, maybe that's another reason for more discussion around in terms of how that process works or if there's, or if we've been finding that kids who have received only two hours have not been prepared to reenter or, you know, hear more experiences from the school level in terms of whether that's been effective or not. Because obviously, if it hasn't been effective in allowing students to reenter and pick up, that's certainly a concern, but I think we, you know, don't know enough on that.
So I would say there's multiple factors there and it's a policy we can certainly look at. The standards that are set forth in policy are consistent with what the requirements are under education law. So that's where the hours originate from. The idea of looking at and assessing the effectiveness of home instruction, as the board will recall, last year, you approved two different home instruction services and those home instruction services were employed because it was determined that we needed different types of instruction and services to meet particular children's needs. So I can assure you that our administration and PPS leadership is looking closely at those particular situations. When it comes to students with health needs, I gotta say, and I hate, I sound like a broken record again, each situation is unique, scenarios play out differently. Utilize concussion, for example. I can tell you that we have children that suffer concussion. They receive some medical treatment, rest, they return to learn. It's the new language that we look at rather than return to play when we think of athletics. And when students receive clearance to start to reengage in learning, we certainly provide that level of support. But oftentimes, we're very limited in what we can offer a child. There's a number of people that have experiences where, based on their child's needs, there's very detailed limitations that are provided by the treating physicians that limit the amount of services that they can get. In those cases, I always want to be able to make available those hours that are due a student. So if, by example, let's say my son was out for a concussion or some other injury but was not able to avail himself of the entire 10 hours, I would say that that child's earned a bank and that when he returns to school, let's still make that bank available if they need to draw upon it because essentially, they earned it. We also look at scenarios where other children, for any number of reasons, may be in a hospital, medical type setting for whatever their particular medical or health needs are. And in many of those cases, the services are not delivered by the district's approved tutoring services but are offered by that local center and we compensate them for the services that are provided. So we do look closely at it. If the board wants to review the policy, we certainly can. But in that process, I would like to make sure we have a lot of appropriate voices around it so we can look at all those different scenarios and not just look at the cost factors associated with it. Let's work through the different scenarios and look at all the related data for discipline to different degrees of medical needs when kids are.
And I bring this up also because when I was reading the policy, it does say secondary level students receive two hours per day. And I know it doesn't actually come out that way. And when I read that, I thought back to when my own daughter was out on concussion. She missed a lot of, sorry, not a concussion. She was having some medical issues and was out for a period of time. And during that time, couldn't learn, was basically not capable of learning. So it just gave me pause reading this, that it says two hours a week. You know, your interpretation of in the bank or whatever, it's not in the policy. So I just, if there was language incorporated in it that allows for that flexibility, because I am aware that the state does, in their regulation, it states a minimum of 10 hours a week at the secondary level and five hours a week. Basically, that goes for the minimum. So we're doing the minimum and I'm sure we're doing more than the minimum. But I'm just, from a policy perspective and since I am on that committee, I just know that, you know, I would like to see some sort of language in there allowing the flexibility. When you read this, it doesn't have that flexibility.
Okay, we're gonna have a policy committee coming up in a few weeks, so you're starting to build the agenda.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Well, I did want to ask now that we've had, you know, this conversation about the philosophy underpinning discipline. I mean, do we have something sort of even informally scheduled for next steps? Is it gonna be, when do you think this will come up again for a follow-up for public meeting? Or do we not know that yet? Is that saying we'll have to decide moving forward?
Well, I addressed that because I wanted to touch on that and had some thoughts. I think, at least from hearing the comments from my fellow trustees, I think the two things that I've heard most focused on is, A, what is our overall SEL curriculum infrastructure going to look like to try to address the issues in particular, try to incorporate more restorative practices? And second, the idea around what in-school suspension options may be available given resources and other constraints. So at least for me, those are the two takeaways. And I think now we need to step back and figure out when would be the right time to have another discussion around those issues sometime between now and obviously budget time. And I think it would be, you know, helpful at that point if we involve some of the other people who work in the schools, whether it be administrators, our PPS department, our social work staff, school psychologists, the others, people who deal with these problems on a day-to-day basis to join the conversation now that we've had a more philosophical discussion to then hopefully try to now talk a little bit more about some of the actual costs involved, resources and other things that may be required so we can start to understand that and develop more, that at least would be, you know, my thoughts, you know, from the board in terms of how to proceed from here.
So, yeah, so we certainly, and then we think about how we structure our annual roundtable. And this will be our fourth or fifth one that we've enjoyed. It's always good to begin to start thinking about the structure and what that dialogue looks like and knowing that when we recall our past experiences and the real compassion appeals that we heard from our administrative team related to the needs in their respective schools, that certainly a pathway to develop more common understanding on that front is important. I would say that in the conversation, again, I want to remind you, go back, look at the document that I shared, or Raina shared a week ago. And let's focus in and around alternative approaches. Let's not restrict ourselves to restorative practices, which many ways has become a buzz, right? So restorative practices were sort of practices. We want to evolve our practices. It may have restorative components to it, but there may be different approaches which may include other models in schools or other things along those lines. So.
Can you clarify that? I don't understand what you're saying.
I'm saying, let's not limit ourselves because we're, Brian listed three items, right? SEL, restorative practice, in-school suspension. I don't want us to be in a box where we're reporting on those given things. We want to be looking creative at opportunities.
No, I certainly wasn't meant to limit to that, but those were some of the things that came up today. And to understand to the extent there's either training that we'd like, that the administration thinks would be helpful, or other resources, you know, between now and budget season to have that further discussion as our philosophy is evolving to understand what resources may be required to try to help us to move in that direction.
Yeah, so, you know, the one resource that we struggle with, you know, I reference for particular items, you know, human resources, fiscal resources and space. But what you highlight is another constraint, which is time. And identifying all the opportunities. highlight is another constraint, which is time, and identifying all the opportunities where we can fit everything in, to a couple superintendent's conference days, a handful of PLRDs and faculty meetings, and lots of, lots of important work to happen there, so it'd have to be well orchestrated work and collaboration with the administrative team before I would begin to speak to what any of that may potentially look like.
Now, you know, so, I understood, I recognize you can't wave a wand and just make things happen in the day, but to understand from the administration's standpoint where we'd like to go and what it will take to get there, both in time and resources, it will be a process, because while we don't control the trends of the day, obviously, you know, as budget season comes up, then there's the resources to understand the fiscal component of whether it's this year or a multi-year suspension, that we may be wanting to engage in to have that dialogue prior to budget season, maybe something that the board would like to continue the conversation in that direction.
Yeah, and I would say supplementing that in my final remarks before you turn it to public comment would be that, as I referenced, conversations and workshops that we'll have throughout the course of this fall heading into budget season, you know, we're gonna have our student performance report, there's gonna be other conversations, but one of them is going to be an update of our long-range plan that we presented the first version of last year, and associated with that, of course, Ms. Stein will update financials based upon her projections from last year and the, you know, the landscape today, but in addition to that, there's other commitments that we've made along the way and other needs that we've identified, so we've had an extensive conversation about needs today, but I just wanna be mindful and state out loud for the Board of Education as well as our community, we've also committed to a couple other things that we have some real focus on, which is that continued growth of our elementary early world language program, which we want to deliver the second phase of that next year. We've talked about our needs to continue to support our student athletes' health and well-being, and expanding the role of our athletic trainer, and then looking at however we wanna define this piece, the social worker and others' related needs, there's three big things and commitments that we've put out there, and those will surface in that, and those three items need to be priorities as we move forward in our budget season next year, because I believe they're commitments that all of us as a unit have made to our community.
No, I certainly remember the discussion we had last year about the world language, and I think the board recognizes the commitments, I think that's why, you know, to have the discussion about what resources may be needed, and whether it's a one-year or multi-year approach is, will be part of the conversation, because we recognize the pie is only so big, and there's many slices that have already been claimed, so, you know, I think it's just having that discussion to understand the landscape, so people have the appropriate expectations around what we're going to do and the timeline along, which those things can be accomplished.
And then, finally, just balancing what you said, so many pieces of the pie, by recognizing we only can fit so many pieces on a plate.
Yes. So, I think with that, we'll now provide for an opportunity for community comment. As a reminder, please, if you're gonna speak, go to the microphone, introduce yourself, and please try to keep your comments to approximately three minutes.
Hi, Adella Lenz. First, I wanna thank everybody for putting this together. I think the shift in our approach to kids will be a positive one, so thank you very much. A lot of the kids just wanted to come, but the open house pulled the upperclassmen to babysit and the younger people, so. Couple things. First, I wanted to ask you if you have considered not reinventing the wheel. I know that there are programs, and there are experts in restorative practices, and there are people that have already gone through this process, and are we doing it the right way to have it beneficial for our district? So, have you considered looking at the Denver, there was one in Denver, there's some organizations that have already implemented it and have been successful. So, seeking out experts instead of reinventing the wheel. Another thing is, I think it's a great idea, and I think it all starts with facilitating trust, and if a student, we have to find a way, so before the punishment happens, we need to have kids trust the administration, and I know that this has been problematic at times, but if we want kids to be truthful, they can't fear the consequences. And I know that through our experience, because we're old, there have been situations where, well, if you lie, you don't get in trouble, if you tell the truth, you do. So, having those experiences on multiple occasions, not with my kids, but just over the years, how could we rectify that? How could we make it telling the truth is positive, and how can we trust the administration to come to them, whether you're drinking, or doing drugs, or whatever, even if you come to school high? How could I go to you as a student and tell you when the first thing is, is, okay, we wanna help you, you're suspended? So, it's facilitating that trust, I think begins before any of the punishment is discussed. Also, revisiting the code of conduct, which goes along with that, reducing the vagueness of it, providing protections for students, and I know other school districts do it as far as ensuring that a parent is called before kids are interviewed, or whatever word you wanna use, to ensure that kids feel comfortable and feel safe, and there's somebody there that is looking out for their well-being, you know, and I understand that the argument is, well, we have to address it quickly. Well, there's not really many instances where it has to be addressed at that moment, and a parent can be called and said, this situation arose, we wanna sit together and talk with everybody. That way, the parent could say, listen, you know, I'll answer on behalf of my child. And that goes back to the trust thing. And, let's see. Oh, another question was, in the appeal, and I haven't found this when I looked at the commissioner's regs, but you had mentioned that you only look at the facts that the administrators looked. My question is, is what if additional facts arose, or information wasn't necessarily considered by the administrators? So, if a parent is appealing a decision, and there's additional facts, I think, and this has come up, not with me, but, you know, with other parents, if you're only considering what the principal looked at, and even though that there's other facts, or, you know, I'm looking at Juliette, but if Juliette decided to ignore something, you know, what protections do the students have, and what rights are we ensuring that their rights are being protected?
I don't wanna get in a back and forth, but I do wanna provide clarity, because you do raise a good point. We follow all the standards that are prescribed in commissioner's regulations that are also, as I referenced, outlined in our Board of Education policies, and considering the administrative case, I only review the evidence that what was considered by the administration in making the determination. However, a family in making their appeal submits a written appeal that includes what their argument and their case may be. That is certainly informs what the consideration and the review entails. So, it's not just looking at this fact, obviously, there's an appeal that comes forth from a family, and that is a written document that sets forth what their objections are, and I review that and then evaluate the facts that are before me from the administrative review.
So, if there are additional facts, you do consider that, or?
I review what is submitted by the parents in writing as a component of the review.
Okay, so I must have misunderstood what you said. Maybe, you know, there's some clarity, because I know that that has been brought up, maybe there could be some clarity with that, that if there is additional information, that that would also be considered. So, that's very good to know.
Ms. Lenz-
And I think that's it.
Okay, I would say if you had anything else, please put it in writing, because you, your time has expired.
And we did say publicly over several meetings that we are going to be reviewing the code of conduct, so if there's any specific comments that you have, or anyone, if they watched this video, just feel free to share it.
Yeah, and I would say if it's the, so, there's process underway in which we will be reviewing the dress code, there will be opportunities for engagement that'll be coming forth in approximately two weeks, so I would say look for that. We're looking at the dress code as our first project this year. If the board wishes for there to be additional conversation in and around the broader code of conduct, I would ask that you allow time for us to structure what that will look like, and we will communicate with the community accordingly, and seek opportunities for engagement and feedback in and around that. I do wanna say that when we adopt things such as the district-wide safety plan, the code of conduct, we do communicate to the community and provide opportunity for public feedback, and that was communicated school-wide at the end of the school year, and it was on the district website, and we saw feedback on both of those items before it was adopted by the board in August. So, there was that required public comment period, and we actually took it a step further, rather than just saying, hey, we're having a public hearing, let us know, we literally put it out there on the website and asked you to write up, Ms. Stein and me and the board with any feedback on those topics. So, we did provide for that level of feedback, but if the board would like a deeper conversation and review of the code of conduct, I would ask that let's look at structuring a process for that, timeline for that, so we can organize and provide space for kids, community members, staff members to engage.
I wanna say thanks to the board for doing this, because, and the school district, the shift is gonna be much more, will impact the kids on a level that you don't even know. So, thank you for doing it, and I look forward to-
Waiting to hear from one of them.
Oh.
Please, Ms. Lenz, please.
Hi. Okay, I have a list of things I wanna mention.
Just say your name, please.
I'm Sophie Regal. I'm gonna do here. Okay. So, I wanted, there's a lot of kids who came to this, and they didn't say anything, which was kinda frustrating, so I guess I wanted to just, like, go over stuff that I feel that they would want to be brought up, not saying that it wasn't brought up, but like, these are like key points. I think that in-school suspensions are probably the way to go with this, and I think that most kids would think so as well. Being out of school for however long makes kids fall behind in class and fail classes, and it's just so counterproductive. I don't really know how to articulate myself well.
Perfect.
Yeah, you're doing great.
I think that also a really big factor is parents having, as you said, like socioeconomic, whatever that topic is really important, because parents don't have time or money to deal with a lot of this stuff, so I think that's one of the things that kids and parents would bring up. Also, you mentioned how you have to pay tutors to go, and how it would be expensive, or like teachers don't have in their, like, contract or whatever, like, their job, to, like, go help kids who are not in the class setting, but teachers spend, they spend a significant amount of time, like, sending work to the tutors, so I would say that that time could be translated into wherever this setting would be, for teachers to actually sit next to the kids, instead of just work being sent over, especially with language, the tutors, from my knowledge, don't really know what's happening, and can't really, like, when, in language classes, you have to speak, it's really important for the learning of that, and I feel that, like, that was totally, or would be totally pushed aside. Yeah, I think that's what I'd say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job, Sophie.
Any other community members you want?
Anna Waldman, I just had a quick question following up on the topic that both David and Beth brought up, and I think Dr. Harrison addressed with respect to the disproportionality of in-school and out-of-school suspensions, and there was a mention of implicit bias training, I'm just curious who was the provider, what was the curriculum there, if we know it? I was a media analyst, so it's-
We did not have a, Mr. Waldman, we did not have training that was prescribed by, through a curriculum, we had a keynote speaker through the Welcoming Schools Program, which is an organization that is like a hallmark program of the National Human Rights Foundation, their commission, so it's one of the top agencies in the country, as you can imagine, on this subject. It was a keynote speaker that we enjoyed on the opening faculty day. We are contemplating approaches moving forward within organizations such as them that would provide opportunities for in-service, and they obviously have well-developed, defined expert curriculum, whether we use them or someone else, where if we go this route, we're not backpocketing this.
No, that's fine, I just, it wasn't clear if it was actual training, or it was just a speaker, to the extent there is a curriculum, or a training you're looking at. I'd also recommend looking at classroom difference, which is under the World with Difference Program, the anti-defamation league has been running for the last thirty years, so.
There's lots of expert organizations, I'd invite you to shoot me an email if you have resources, thank you.
Any other comments before we move on? Seeing none, we'll return back to where we left off, which I think was item five, which were committee reports.
Thank my colleagues for attending, have a good night.
Yeah, that I know. I'm trying to place who we have. Maria? Anything from nine eleven tomorrow? We didn't do anything from nine eleven. Everybody just left. Well, there's always a pause when everyone leaves.
So, B and G, do we have updates from the B and G committee?
Well, I guess you want me to do it.
Go ahead.
I don't have the agenda in front of me. Basically, we've spent our past two meetings reviewing all of the projects and kind of grouping them into what makes sense academic, I'm sorry, economically to lump together, and also what needs, what has a higher priority, for example, the boiler at Dow's Lane, you know, certain projects are being bumped up, and also thinking about the different campuses and what we can do, you know, we can't do construction in all the buildings at the same time, and, you know, that's not gonna happen either, but what makes sense? Is that a fair representation, Dr. Harrison?
Yeah, I would think so, you know, really looking at where the fiscal bang for the buck is, and aligning that with priority, so the boiler is one great example, we're looking at how we wanna package them for SED approval purposes as well, and then finally, those priorities, trying to place safety and security initiatives at the forefront of the construction.
So, we've, oh, sorry, and we've created timelines of when drawings need to be in by the SED, knowing that we're gonna have to, you know, there're gonna be different stages where it's gonna be brought to the board, working with various community members, breaking them up into, you know, groups, and meeting with Triton and H2M, all of this is being coordinated, so we're making sure we're trying to stay within our numbers. So, we're just in the pre-planning stages and creating our timeline.
Yeah, no, I would say the goal for the last comments is working towards that timeline, so we can report back once that's further along in terms of what the timeline will be for projects, and when the board can expect to start to see things bubble up to board level for review and comment.
Right.
You know, with the idea that obviously there'll be some things that really won't be commented on, I don't think any of us are gonna be commenting on the boiler piece of it, because that's just going to happen and be done by a responsible bidder. just going to happen and be done by a responsible bidder. But as we get into things that are more design and aesthetic related, that's where there'll be those opportunities. So, communications committee.
So, the communications committee, the new communications committee met for the first time and discussed overall annual goals, status of the website project, and open house speeches. Am I missing anything?
No, essentially, that's it. And we have a next meeting, I think, is on the 25th, we were reminded of today.
And policy committee.
The policy committee, this is a little weird. The policy committee met at the end of the summer to review three important policies that had to do with the one-to-one initiative. They appeared as, the board accepted them at the last board meeting of August. We had to waive the first rule, and we adopted them only because of the nature of the policies, and we needed them in place for the new initiative at the middle school.
And also, the homeless policy was updated.
Oh, correct, right.
Yes.
And we have.
Booster Club.
Okay, hold on. Before Booster Club, PTSA update?
I'm going to read from my notes instead of just extemporaneously speaking. So, the general membership meeting will be on October 8th at 9:15 in the NPR, which is in Dow's Lane. And I did want to let the public know, since it's a public meeting, that this is a great general membership meeting in which you will be able to meet members of the executive committee, the committee chairs, and learn all about their goals and events for the year, as well as the new PTSA fundraising drive. And I also wanted to report, I actually hadn't had a chance to tell the superintendent, that the Village of Irvington Library had reached out to me about some free programming that they have available for K through 12 children. And through leveraging the relationship between the PTSA, who's trying to community-build under a new hashtag called Irvington Spirit, they have successfully created a relationship where parents and families in the community will learn more about these after-school opportunities, which are in walking distance of actually all of our schools. So, that's good news.
Fantastic.
Booster Club.
Yes. So, they had their first meeting last night, and I went. And what a great bunch of people, I might add, for helping the community. But some real basic stuff. I will say that homecoming is coming, and they want to make sure that people know that homecoming is on the way and that there being, you know, the Booster Club will be out there running all the different things, the grills and the sales. And they were working hard for the time I was there and really ironing out communication and thinking about, you know, trying to get a hold, you know, figure out how best to get emails out, because they are very clearly, they wanted me to say at the public meeting that there's, so there's, they're very distinctly outside of the Irvington School District, operate as a separate entity, is a different tax status, and they wanted to make sure that was very clear to everybody in the community. They also want to make sure there's a differentiation between the PTSA, spirit wear and such, and with the athletic piece. A lot of the talk that went on was about, ironically, about how they could get different logos, the different team names on different pieces. And so, I.
I've been engaged in those conversations.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but it was a really great meeting, and they're really doing a lot for the community. So, you know, if folks want to come out and support them, it's a good opportunity to get in touch with the folks on the Booster Club Committee, because they are looking for adults and support to help them.
Okay, so, I guess we'll now move to, I am moving to our consent agenda. I get to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First thing, if there's no community members now present, I think we'll skip the second community comment piece. So, our next meeting is September 24th at 7:30 in this room. Again, get a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.